How are you guys doing? I'm like, how are you guys doing?
Good, how are you doing?
Good.
At least they let us do it. It's probably changed now.
I don't know. Still fun, absolutely.
You, how you doing? So good.
Oh, it's already been done. Maybe my wife did it. Or probably worse idea, forgot.
Coming from the city council.
This one is eighteen. Yeah, it's every, every other year. Both of our cars are on.
I know, that's what I said.
If we know, that they don't want to.
Yeah, that's a good question. What do we got?
As soon as I can say that, no.
Okay, we're getting the go-ahead that we're ready to go in city council meeting tonight. Thank you all for joining us here in council chambers and across the world on YouTube and Spanish Fork Community Network as well. We appreciate everybody in attendance here, especially these young men that we're going to arm wrestle later on television. You guys ready for that? Do you warm up? Better warm up.
I don't think they needed to.
All right, they probably didn't need to. Thanks, everybody, for joining us. Welcome to council meeting in Spanish Fork. We'll get things started with a prayer motivational message and the pledge. Councilman Euler has the motivational message and prayer for us tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. I've invited my good friend Elijah Lewis to give our thought and our prayer tonight.
Which one first?
You can choose.
Let's start with the prayer.
Okay.
Our God, we are grateful for this wonderful city that we have. We are grateful to be a free people, for the blessing it is to enjoy all that we do. We're grateful for the leadership of this city here in our government and for the many leaders in our public sector, private sector. We pray for guidance and wisdom in this meeting today and that decisions can be made wisely and that goodness will prevail. And we pray this and thank thee in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Everyone here is or will be a leader. That's more than just a nice statement to make everyone feel special. It's more than a participation trophy. In actuality, we are all called, it is our calling, our duty, and our privilege to be leaders by the simple virtue of being members of a free society. None of us are excused. The first step then is, in this studio, is to learn where am I called to lead? What do I care about? Who do I want to serve uplift and inspire? And how can I lead where I already stand? Then after we show up as a leader, we have to ask ourselves the question of integrity. When I lead, am I showing up with integrity? There are two basic definitions of integrity. The first is steadfast adherence to a moral or ethical code. The second is the state of being sound, whole, unimpaired, unbroken. To me, one of the greatest lessons of leadership with integrity is found in the Old Testament in the book of Nehemiah. We read of a Jewish leader Nehemiah, who after the Babylonian exile takes it upon himself to rebuild the wall of Jerusalem. So he rallies a broken people and they begin construction. Well, these Jews have enemies and they plot to compromise this project. We read in chapter six, "Now it came to pass that Sanballat and Tobiah and Gesham the Arabian and the rest of our enemies heard that I had built the wall and that there was no breach left therein. They sent unto me, saying, Come, let us meet together in some one of the villages, but they thought to do me mischief. And I sent messengers unto them, saying, I am doing a great work, so that I cannot come down. Why should the work cease whilst I leave it and come down to you? And they sent unto me again four times after this sort, and I answered them after the same manner." Leaders with integrity do not cave to time, to pressure, intimidation, or personal desires. Author and researcher Brene Brown has said, "Integrity is choosing courage over comfort, choosing what is right over what is fun, fast, or easy, and practicing virtues rather than just professing them." Shakespeare said, "To thine own self be true," but perhaps it would be better to say, "To sound principles be true." So, I would invite everyone here to do the following. First, take stock of every leadership function you serve in, whether that's civic, church, family, business, on a team, in a peer group, or what have you. Second, articulate what it means to show up with integrity in that function. And if it helps do this activity with a spouse, a colleague, a friend, a coach, a parent. And then finally, of course, implement it. If you're not showing up with integrity, change. Put what you wrote, what it means to lead with integrity, into action. Write it down, review it. The Roman philosopher Ovid said, "Our integrity is never worth so much as when we have parted with our all to keep it." Let us pay the price to show up with integrity. Thank you.
Thank you, Elijah. Appreciate it.
Councilman Carden has leading us in the pledge tonight.
All rise, repeat the pledge with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, for participating in that. And thank you, Elijah, for your comments and your prayer there. Item C, I'm going to hand over to a dad of one of the Dawns wrestlers. Councilman Euler has been keeping us all in the, on the city council at least, up to date of the goings-on of the Spanish Fork wrestling team. And so I see, I think it's fitting for him to welcome our wrestlers here tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. Coach Spencer, why don't you come forward? If that's all right. Anytime the youth in our community, especially at our schools, achieve something great, we as a council and the mayor love to invite them in to give them the recognition that they've earned, that they deserve. And tonight, we have the opportunity to recognize the team members of the Spanish Fork High School wrestling team and their coaches, who this year, second time, second year in a row, we get to recognize them as state champions. And so, Kip, I'm going to turn the time over to you, if that's all right, and have you, first of all, talk about some of the achievements that you've seen and then introduce your team.
Perfect. So, this year was awesome for us. It was super, super successful in a competition setting. When we went to the state tournament, we were underdogs by twenty points, according to experts, I guess. So, we were over, we were able to overcome that. We set a school record of fourteen state placers, which was set the year before with thirteen, which we broke, which was set in oh-five with eleven, I think. And then we tied the school record for five state champs. We set the school record for nine state finalists. We had our first four-time state champ in school history, and we did a bunch of awesome stuff. And so, it was really cool to see this team grow and compete together and not just learn about wrestling, but learn about themselves and how to become good young men and to see them grow together and pick each other up. So, it was super fun as a coach to, I guess, think everybody gives me the credit, but really just have really amazing young men that did it all. So, it was cool. You want me to introduce them?
Yeah, let's, let's bring them up and recognize them. I know you've got a full, full crew here, but yeah, let's, let's.
Any other things before we start that?
Any questions for Coach before he brings these kids up? Remind us of the gap before last year.
So, in nineteen eighty-four, nineteen eighty-four, they won their first state title. Twenty years later, they won their third, but they won their second the year before that. So, it's kind of a twenty-year pattern. And so then, twenty twenty-four was when we went again in this year. So, it's kind of a twenty-year pattern of, we're hoping to do a little bit more than that, maybe.
We had you penciled in for twenty years from last year and then you came.
Yeah, we came through last year, so, so, yeah. No, we, it's been, it's been a long time coming and a lot of people behind the scenes that aren't even here, as well as the kids that are here and their parents, have put in a lot of time to make sure that twenty-year gap didn't happen without it. So, it's been great.
And the back and forth this year was with you and Box Elder?
It was actually kind of crazy because we went up and wrestled Box Elder and beat him pretty bad. And that's who it was supposed to be against, but their team is so, they have ninety-two wrestlers, which makes it really easy to perform better than most other teams. And so, because of their depth, even though they knew, I think, that we had the superstar power, with their depth, they thought they would, well, the experts thought they would be able to beat us by twenty. But our depth ended up being just as good, so it was great. So, yeah, it was a great year. So, really fortunate to be a part of it and, and actually just watch these guys do what they, they do best, which is perform under pressure. So, it was awesome.
Kip, before you introduce them, why don't you share with the public and people that are watching at home? I think you, you've got an open practice, so you obviously want the team to continue to succeed in the future. Part of that is new recruits, getting people to come and learn and being part of a winning tradition, right?
For sure.
So, what are you doing to help promote that and to help, help teach the youth in our community?
So, right now, we run a practice from five-thirty to six-thirty, but we do end in April because we want all the kids to play baseball. We like them to do multiple sports. So, from five-thirty to six-thirty is what we call our little kid, little kids, and it's pretty much anyone that is in elementary school that doesn't know how to wrestle, focusing pretty much on kindergarten, first grade, second graders, and below. That goes from five-thirty, six-thirty, Monday and Wednesdays at the high school. And then at six-thirty to seven-thirty, we have anyone that is kindergarten to eighth grade that has a little bit of experience. So, if they're a little bit above that, that first group, then they come in. And then from seven-thirty to nine, on the same nights, we have anybody that wants to come in and we practice all the way up to high school kids. And then we have asked any former wrestler from Spanish Fork to come in. And so, we have awesome, like, kids that just wrestled in college a few years ago, as well as our coaching staff in there. And it's all free because we just want to help the kids, the kids do it, right? We just want to help them get better and, and have access. So, a lot of our kids right now are training for the national tournament or national tournaments. There's a couple different national tournaments. And so, they're training for those, and so, they're all there participating in those practices. So, not only do you get kids that are trying to be better for next year, but you get kids that are moving on, you know, from a four-time state champ to a state champ to a kid that didn't qualify to state, all in there trying to get better and helping each other get better. And it's, it's been really good. We also have those kids training for the national tournament, as well as the high school kids showing up for the end of the middle age practice, and we make them teach the moves. So, to help them develop, I think, what I tell them is if I tell you something, you'll learn it. If you practice it, you'll learn it better. If you do it in a live situation, you really do learn it. But to really master a skill of something, you need to teach somebody else how to do it. So, we, we've pawned that responsibility off and we help them, but on them teaching the little kids, so that they'll learn it even better than, than what they will if they're doing it themselves. So, it's been really cool, kind of a mentor program that the little kids love them being there because they're, they get to watch them wrestle under the lights at the high school and then they get to get taught by them, and it's, it's really cool. The, the high school kids don't get to see it, but I get to listen to the little kids and how excited they are when they show up, so.
That's awesome.
It is fun.
It's great, thank you, so good.
You bet.
Yeah, go ahead and introduce your team.
What if, what if we do it this way? Because I think, I think I've learned a little bit about what, I've seen a few state, we've seen a few state champions. And, and just like your coach pointed out, the dedication of, of what you young men have done is no small feat at all, and we know there's some support at home, right, Coach?
Sure.
That makes this stuff possible. It's, it's, there's nothing cheap about sports anymore. It seems like everything costs more money and, and the time and effort of some of your kids not being able to drive yet and get to practices early and late and everything else. There certainly is a commitment from them and their families to put in. And so, if, if possible, I think, starting with your kids, have them come up to the mic, tell us their name and then their parents, who their parents are. And then have them start with Chief over there. Chief, I think Chief wrestled, you might, you know, I know they've got a wrestling family, but start with Chief and shake his hand. Go around shaking hands and end with, with Dale Robinson over there at the end. And then that'll kind of make a natural, stay there after you shake Dale's hand, so you can be ready for the picture after, because Jack will want a picture in front of it. But, but please come up and introduce who you are and say your parents' names too, so we can know what good stock you come from. Are you all right with that, Coach?
Can I add one thing to it?
Please.
If you will, if the wrestlers will, if you placed at state or took state, if you'll add that, is that okay?
Perfect.
Or qualified for state or anything they want to add accomplishment-wise, is that all right?
That, perfect, it's up to them, yep, what they want to do there.
Perfect, do we just start up front?
Yes, start, you, you direct who starts and where they finish, Coach.
We'll start with the two team captains, well, two of them, I don't know where the third one went. But we'll start with these two and then we'll just move back, so.
I'm Porter Olson, son of Mike and Heidi Olson, and I'm a state champ.
Out, Porter. Go ahead, Brody.
I'm Brody Vogelsberg and the son of Brooke and Brian Vogelsberg, and I placed.
My name is Hyrum King. I am the son of Jame and James and Janine King. I am a state placer.
And a state champion.
My name is Landon Brelsford, and I'm, my, son of Brooke and Casey Brelsford.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Riker Cluff, son of Spencer and Trina Cluff, and I'm a state qualifier.
My name's Connor Simons. My parents are Darson Jalen Simons. I'm a placer and a qualifier.
My name is Kyler Olson, and I am the son of Mike and Heidi Olson. I'm a state qualifier and I'm the youngest brother out of the two on the team.
I'm TK Rawlings, son of Tyler and Amber Rawlings. I took fifth at state.
I'm Kyler Spencer, son of Kip and Amanda Spencer, and I took second at state.
I'm Steller Lloyd. My parents are Brandy and Jeremy Lloyd, and I'm a state placer.
I am Jayden Euler. My parents are Kevin and Angela Euler, and I'm a state qualifier.
I'm Cooper Evans, son of Matt and Valerie Evans.
I am Noah Beebe, son of Glenn and Rachel Beebe.
I am Riker Olson, son of Mike and Heidi Olson, and I'm a state champ.
I'm Boston Doherty, son of Jennifer Munter and Nick Munter, and I'm a state qualifier.
My name is Phoenix Sperry, and my parents are Andrea and Travis Sperry.
I'm Ella Mason. I'm one of the team managers, and my parents are Wendy and Tyler Mason.
I'm Claire Barney. My parents are Kyle and Pam, and I'm also a team manager.
My name's Grace Sorensen, and my parents are Greg and Michelle Sorensen, and I am a team manager.
I'm Jackson Sorensen, and my parents are Michelle and Greg Sorensen, and I'm a state runner-up.
I'm Cahill Simons. My parents are Darson Jalen Simons, and I'm a two-time state placer.
I'm Carson Shelley. My parents are Natalie and Kyle Shelley, and I've won state the last four years.
I'm Wyatt Mangleston. My parents are Ben and Camille Mangleston, and I took fourth at state at one hundred and fifty-seven.
I'm taking Levitt. My parents are Aaron and Mikell Levitt, and I'm a state runner-up.
I'm Rope Baum, son of Alvin and Mikell Baum.
I'm Luke Mason, son of Tyler and Wendy Mason, and I'm on the Spanish Fork Wrestling Team.
I'm Brennan Pierce, son of Annie and Corey Pierce. I'm also on the wrestling team.
And then Jason Warner's in the back. He really wanted to come up here and talk a little bit, but we won't make him. But you can at least come up and say who you are.
I'm up for the picture.
So, and then I'm Kip Spencer, the coach. I just wanted to shake your hand, so.
I'm Jason Warner, assistant wrestling coach.
All right, so we're going to try to stand in front of the council and may have to do a couple rows because we got to keep it kind of tight, all right?
Jack, you want any up on the sides? Or you got enough room?
Uh, yeah, we should do a few.
Okay, some of you.
One time, like, four or five on each side up by the council. So, maybe a few over there and a few over here. Yeah, go. Yeah, that's, that's probably good. Hey, and then we're going to have to go tighter, so you're too wide, Corey's son. Let's, we're about there. Hey, that looks good. All right, make sure I can see your face. There's some faces I can't see. Right here, with the short hair, yeah. Hey, ready? We'll do a few, just stay still. Perfect, good job, guys.
Okay, don't go anywhere yet. All right.
Congratulations.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Hey, don't, don't leave the room yet. So, don't leave the room yet. Just got a couple things, couple more things I want to say real quick to these guys. Some of them shared how well they did at state. Congratulations on those that took state, qualified, placed. It's been an incredible ride to watch this team and kind of feel like I'm a little, little part of it going to the tournaments and meets and watching you guys wrestle. Some of you, and I just want to share this, some of you maybe didn't quite achieve what you set out to at the beginning of the season. You either didn't qualify, didn't place, or you didn't take state, and maybe you had that goal to start off with. And there's two things that I want you to learn from that. I know a lot of you were disappointed. I saw it in your faces. You struggled. It was hard to lose. And there's two things I want you to recognize. First of all, at some point in the future, you're going to have another difficult time. I don't know what it'll be, but you'll have additional hard things that you go through. And what I want you to remember is that you got through this, you'll get through whatever, whatever comes down the road. That's the first thing. Second thing, somebody you know, either a spouse, a child, or a friend, at some point in the future is going to have a very difficult thing that they go through. And you're going to have the opportunity now to wrap your arms around them and say, I know what you're feeling, it's hard, but you'll get through it. And so, just remember those two things. Learn from your experiences, learn from, from your coaches, learn from what you've gone through as wrestlers. Wrestling is not an easy sport. You guys get beat up on, you beat up on a lot of other kids as well. It's not easy, but you guys are tough. Remember that. You'll get through hard times because of the experiences that you have now. So, congratulations on taking state, keep working hard.
We can't say enough, when it, when it comes to things like this and getting the chance to honor your hard work and do it in front of your city, in front of your parents, and, and things like that, what it means to your city is, is the way you carry yourself. The way, like Councilman Euler brought up, the way you carry yourself in defeat, the way you carry yourself in victory. That's why sports, and especially your kind of sport, is a pretty good equalizer in life. And so, we can't thank you enough for representing your city well and, and doing that at such a, such a high level and being dedicated for it. And so, we're happy to see some of you here next year doing the same thing. And, and those that are moving on, just take that lesson into life like Councilman Euler said. But thank you for representing your high school, your, your, your family, but also your city in a, in a positive, in a positive way. And congratulations on your success, very well deserved. So, and congrats to your parents too, just a, a, a team effort and a family effort for sure.
Mayor, we've got a photo of the wrestling team. I know you like to hang stuff on the wall in the mayor's office. I don't know if it's here tonight, if it made it or not.
Is it right there? Oh, yes, that's what we need.
Bring them up, yep.
Yep.
Thank you, Jayden.
Yep.
One's for you and one's for Coach Spencer, so. Looks like the wrestlers. One's for you and one's for Coach Spencer. So, looks like the wrestlers.
Oh, yes.
So Jayden, take one to Coach Spencer. Looks like the wrestlers all signed the backs, so a little memento to put on your wall.
This is, uh, this is, uh, the mayor's retirement plan as some of you become famous, and I have your signature. That's, uh, that's, that's what's gonna pay off in the future. But until then, it'll hang in the mayor's office as we have you from last year and many other state champions and, and kids that have done awesome things in our community. So come visit the mayor's office anytime. Councilman Euler and these, these other jokers have a key. So if you wanna come see your picture in the mayor's office, come see it anytime. You're, you're, you're in there forever. So Coach, good work. Appreciate you. Thank you.
Thanks, you guys.
Are we gonna make him stay for the rest of council?
We should, right?
No, no.
Shane excused you. Thank you, guys.
No way they would be up here if they stayed tonight.
It's incredible the hand strength that those. I know.
I even noticed.
We got enough first responders in here tonight. They should, you know, we should, SFCN could film something sometime. They could come, you know, get in the gym there at the, at the, at the station and see, see who lifts more, don't you think? Be something. Travis, Travis giving the thumbs up. That'll be some SFCN content coming soon.
He did wrestle. I knew it. Chief Johnson there on the left, wrestling in high school.
Is that Slaymaker on the right?
Yeah, it is. It's too good right there.
I'm gonna need that one in the mayor's office, too. Good. Oh, so good. Well, thank you. Thank you again, students and parents and, and Spanish Fork High School. It's fun to have a couple of high schools, a couple, three high schools in our, in our city that, that are overachieving and, and riding fire trucks down Main Street all the time and just a, just a cool time to, to see the youth succeed here in Spanish Fork. So, so good work, wrestling champs. Okay, it takes us to item D on our agenda tonight. Recognition of some employees of the fourth quarter. Mr. Tyler Jacobson is, can, can introduce us to who these people are and who their supervisors are, maybe.
Thanks, Mayor. So we are very privileged to have a couple of our, our best here tonight. And we have with us, from our engineering department, our, our project manager, Matt Romero, who manages all of our city, uh, city projects as far as construction. So if you've been to the new SFCN building, he managed that project, managing the rec center right now and a couple of other projects, wastewater treatment plan and some others. So, so grateful for him. We'll have, we'll actually have his supervisor come up and share some more about him in just a minute. So we'll invite Jared Johnson to come and introduce him. And then we'd also like to recognize Deputy Chief Hoarding, and she has been such a wonderful addition to the Spanish Fork team. So we're grateful to, to have her here, and we'll have Chief Hells introduce Chief Hoarding.
Do you guys know Matt Romero?
Yeah.
Yeah, we did.
Unfortunately. You guys know ties for this tonight, Jared?
What's that?
Neither of you ties tonight?
Oh, they'll offer to give me hands.
Oh, okay. Thanks.
You're lucky I won't have them changed.
We work.
No, I just wanna read something real quick that was written, written about Matt and his dedication to Spanish Fork City. Matt has stepped up to take on major project this year as the project manager for the Fire Station 61, design and build. Despite already managing multiple projects, Matt took this, took on this responsibility without hesitation, demonstrating a positive attitude and unwavering commitment. He excels at compete, sorry, he excels at keeping everyone informed, ensuring all processes run smoothly, and handling communications promptly and professionally. His ability to juggle priorities and maintain such high level of importance is truly commendable. Matt's dedication, professionalism, and exceptional leadership make him more than deserving of this top employee recognition. So I just wanna add, he's been here for just about three years, and he's done an excellent job. Just not only SFCN, he rebuilt the library, and he's a project manager on a rec center and the wastewater treatment plant. So he is actually running most every project we have in the city, and he's doing it efficiently. And so, and when we hired him about three years ago, I can remember interviewing him. We were interviewing him for the SWP, or SWP Administrator job. And during the interview, I just had, I just looked at this guy thinking, boy, I've got ideas for him. He did an excellent job with the SWP. He managed our audit with the state. Him and James Darling did an excellent job to make sure that we did not get fined, and we went through that with no fines, and Matt was a big part of that. And one of his jobs, I can remember giving to him at the very first was 1,000 North Slim Chickens was tracking mud all over the road. And I said, Matt, can you go down there and get that taken care of? He's like, yeah, I'll go take care of it. He comes back and I says, so they get the road cleaning? He goes, yeah, they didn't have a sweeper, so I made them get their brooms out and sweep up. From that point on, I knew that we weren't gonna have a problem with any mud on our road with him, we're seeing it. But, um, and that's just an example of his dedication to make sure things get done. He gets to the job site and he makes sure it's done before he leaves. It's the same with every building he's building. He makes sure it's built to our quality. He's making sure it's built to our standard, and we're getting the product we want. So the other thing is, is I noticed, he brought his expertise to our team, and it's, it's just outstanding to see exactly what we didn't know we were doing. Brought that much expertise to us that we actually can see an improvement with the quality of buildings we're getting, the projects we're getting done. He's brought his family here, Marcy and his mom, Lynn, and his daughter, Jase?
Jade.
Jade. Sorry. Um, but you have anything to add?
No.
Speech?
Speech? Well, I was actually shocked. Like, how can you be here for three years and get this award, you know? There's guys that have been here a lot longer than me, so I'm probably not deserving of it, and they are, but, you know, I, I love working at Spanish Fork City. I owned my own company for a lot of years, and my wife actually put me in for this job. Didn't even know it till I got a call to get an interview. And thought, oh, well, why not, you know? I've kind of always in the back of my mind wanted to work for Spanish Fork City. I worked with them at the ballpark since I was 10 years old when you can just do that. You can't do that anymore, right? But, um, yeah, I love it here. I'm homegrown, and I take a lot of pride. And it's like I've told Jared, he's said to me before, you know, God, do we need another project manager? And I'm like, eh, I don't really want anybody else's name on that, those, anything in Spanish Fork. So I kinda wanna do them all. So that's, I figure out my time and get it done, and I enjoy what I do. So.
Who else worked at the ballpark from your family?
My dad, Randy Romero.
Just for a few years.
Just for a few. Worked at the golf course before that. So, but yeah, so.
By a few years, we mean decades.
My mother, Susan's done a ton with the city, and so it's kind of in my blood, I guess. They didn't, I know, I get to do it every day. I have a great boss. He does, he's pretty awesome, I think, so.
I worked with Matt at the ballpark, too, and he would not have received Employee of the Quarter back then.
Let me tell you a story about Chief. First day I show up.
Wait, are you gonna say that he wouldn't have been chief either?
Him and his brother Jared decided to throw me in the canal because that's the initiation that you studied. Yeah. Back then, you used to could do that stuff.
Hazing is not allowed.
Yeah.
We got a lot of employees in the gallery.
I really respect Chief Johnson, you know? I got to work under him, basically, and so.
Did you work with Matt's father-in-law? Dwayne was here for?
Yeah. And I guess my fa, my father-in-law worked Spanish Fork City also as a, as a cop, so.
Matt's kinda had the tattoo of Spanish Fork City for a long time. It's just.
Mayor had to twist my arm to get me.
Finally got here.
I can say yes.
I dare you to get the logo tattooed on your back.
No.
Pay for it.
Hey, let's do it.
Not from here, oh my gosh.
What color? Just black and white?
It's always fine.
You know what? If Shane does it, I'll do it.
All joking aside, though, you know, when, when Matt did come here, we, he jumped right into projects, and from an administrative point of view as well, he's just been so easy to work with. Very, very, personality-wise, super accommodating, and then skills-wise, fantastic. So in every way, shape, and form. It didn't surprise me when I saw that he got the Employee of the Quarter, but very well deserved. And, and, you know, you can't get it again for five years, so there's a limitation, but I expect you to at least be in the running every other, every other time.
I'll just keep doing what I'm doing.
Fantastic. Well deserved.
Well deserved. Congratulations.
Appreciate it.
Matt, can we get a photo with your family? We want your family to come up here if they would, all of them.
Jade, come on.
You don't have to speak, but.
Come up for the picture.
She's got her uniform on. We just want your picture. You can shake everybody's hand if you want to. You've done this before, though, haven't you? You're like, this is usual for you. She's done this. Just come out here. We're gonna take a picture with you guys. No pressure. Doesn't she have a? She's just, she's just used to getting up and walking around the whole room, isn't she, Councilman?
Thanks, guys.
Congrats.
Thank you, guys.
Mayor, Council, thanks for having me again tonight. We've done this a few times from our department, and it's an honor to be able to always recognize the amazing staff of Spanish Fork Fire and EMS to, for Employee of the Quarter. We've had quite a few, and it's because of their amazing work that they do every day, day in and day out. So Chief Hoarding could come forward. Chief Hoarding was recognized. I'll, I'll read the recognition, and then I'll recognize those that are here with her and who she is outside of just this recognition. The, the person that wrote this up said Chief Hoarding has been with our city for three years, but in that time, she's become indispensable. Chief Hoarding is always looking forward to make our city the best it can be and encourage everyone else to do the same. She has been an immense support to all of us in pursuing further education and certification opportunities. She also takes the time to get to know everyone she works with personally, so she knows how best to support them. So that's just a small snippet of what Chief Hoarding does. Chief Hoarding was indispensable from the moment I hired her to come here and be the deputy chief of a fire and EMS department that was needing growth and, and rapid growth, and we've achieved that as a team over the last three years together. And to be quite honest, honestly speaking, that, I wouldn't have been able to do it without Chief Hoarding. She has been a force. She's gotten a lot of things done, implemented a lot of projects and ideas that have made us the department we are today. Chief Hoarding is joined tonight by her husband, Chris Wetten, who was a volunteer firefighter for us for a while and just retired as a firefighter from Springville City. Chief Hoarding is the mother to a son, TJ, and daughter, Johanna. And she lives just down here in the city of Spanish Fork and loves riding horses and enjoying all the things Spanish Fork has to offer as far as the hometown feel. I know she can speak towards that. But I could go on speaking about how indispensable Chief Hoarding is. I can name numerous projects that she's currently working on or has accomplished to help us become the, the Fire and EMS department that we are today. But she's recognized throughout the entire state of Utah to, from her teaching, from her leadership. And also, one of the coolest things about Chief Hoarding is she is one of only, I think, three females firefighters to achieve, in Utah, to achieve the rank of deputy chief, I believe, from what I've, what I've gone back in history to look for. So pretty amazing feat in her, in, in that aspect of her job, and she is an inspiration to women firefighters. Forty-seven percent of the Spanish Fork Fire and EMS department is female. And I credit a lot of that to our female employees that were here prior to me being here, and that's Captain Reed and, and many others. Jen's here. She was here putting in the work. Several other female Fire and EMS employees. And then we brought Chief Hoarding on board, and her ability to show women that they can do this job is incredible. And, and she's an inspiration to them. So I'll let her have the, the mic, but congratulations.
Thank you very much. Definitely a, a big surprise, and I, I don't know what to say. This is such a great place. I've, I was like you guys. I lived and worked right where I grew up. I bought my parents' home until I came here. And it was really hard to move and to walk away from all of this, right? But to come here and to see the love and the community and all the dedication here, it's just been an honor to be here. So I loved every moment, and it's amazing. So thank you so much.
Congratulations.
What is that? What's going on? He retired and got bionic? Congratulations, Chris. Wow, that is definitely her daughter. That's awesome. That is awesome.
Thanks.
Thank you, guys. I think Seth, you'll remember this, but one of the first pictures we saw of, of Krista, when, when bringing her on board was a picture of her teaching some kids in, in her fire gear at an elementary school. And it was like, holy cow, if we could get someone like that to be able to come and, and inspire other people and teach them, teach them what you do. I remember that just being something that stood out from the very beginning about trying to get her here, so.
Yeah, everything that Chief said is spot on, and I remembered that she, she left near Paradise Eden to come here. And both of those are facts, I think, right? Yeah. I'm sure she had a garden on the property that she was at, but, but she's been everything that Chief said and has done a great job. She came in and I remember going to a couple of scenes where she was running command, just watching, wanting to see how our incident command structure worked. And so I would just go sit kinda right next to her, and it was always fun to watch her just do. It, it is fun to watch her do what she does because she has a great command of a scene and, and a great organization. So very well deserved, and, and we're, we're lucky to have, lucky to have her on our team.
Well, thank you, guys. Thank you both for bringing your families and, and that recognition. Such a, such a cool thing to, to be able to, to recognize good employees doing good things. And you, you just, you, you're what makes Spanish Fork great, so appreciate you so much. Thank you, guys. Okay, no other questions for our employees of the quarter, council members? Okay, alright. Well, you guys don't have to stay either, but you can. Love you to stay.
It started so strong tonight, with the full crowd.
I know, I know. We're whittling our way at it.
You, you let them go. You said they could go.
They need to lock the doors once they're in.
I'll find it. I'll, I'll, I'll put one up in the, Jared's lobby in for a picture of Matt in the mayor's office, but we're not gonna do that. I probably got a picture of Matt when he was five. We could put that up. Yeah, okay, alright. Okay, thank you, everybody. It would take us to the next item on our agenda. It's the public comment section. Please keep, if you can keep your comments to three minutes. Jack, I'll have the timer up, and, and we'll try to stick to that. But please, for anything, general public comments to the mayor and council, questions or comments, please come up and talk to us, and we'll take notes and see if we can answer questions or, or, or take under consideration whatever you have to tell us. Please come up if you're here for public comments. So after a little bit of finding out, discovered what the issue was, and I'll let her talk about it in a bit more detail, but this is concerning a sidewalk that's just south of the Spanish Fork Junior High School, which she attends, and she walks home just about every day. And so this is part of her walking route, and so this is on 820 East, and as the sidewalk approaches 1050 South, so just a block or two south of the junior high. I'll let her explain the problem.
So on the sidewalk, there's a house with a fence, and this fence used to be covered with these bushes that all have died, and all of their roots are covering the sidewalk. It's almost impossible to walk on the sidewalk. Students have to walk in the road, especially in large groups, like pushed into the middle of the road, so close to a school. So there's all these cars driving to the school to pick up their children, which makes it a relatively busy road and hard to cross to the other side of the sidewalk, I mean the road, which is not blocked with plants. And so I'm worried it poses a bit of a health concern when students are forced to walk in the road, especially with bikes and scooters that they have to tow along. And I'm wondering if there's a way to get that cleared off, so we can walk on the sidewalk again.
Give me the address again, Alan.
So this is on 820 East, this is the sidewalk on the west side, as it approaches 1050 South.
Thanks. On the east side of the?
On the west side, west side of the street. And I believe that there's a vinyl fence and a concrete retaining wall, and I think the vegetation has just kind of poured over the sidewalk.
That's a great, great thing to come to the council and bring it to our attention, and our staff will get right on that. So thanks for being brave enough to approach us and let us know about that problem.
Emma, was it Emma?
Amelia.
Amelia, Amelia.
Yes, perfect.
Real quick, Mayor, Amelia was in my class a couple of weeks ago, we spoke to, the council came and spoke to the junior high, and I said, come to city council and share this. I'm so glad to see you actually did it. So like councilwoman Beck and the mayor said, we'll take a look at it, we'll work with the city directors. Good job.
Thank you.
Then you can stand there and say, it's because of me, you can now walk on the sidewalk. And if you want to collect payment, I mean, it's all up to you.
Did she have the sidewalk named after her?
That's right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alan. Thank you, Amelia. Anyone else? Yes.
Silver with the Spanish Fork Community Garden, and we just were gonna say hi, introduce ourselves, I'm Rachel.
I'm Hillary.
I do have some material for you guys, if I can bring it on up.
So while she's doing that, I'll just give a little bit of background on my end. So my name's Hillary Whitaker, I work at Community Action Services and Food Bank. We are a nonprofit that our service area is Summit Wasatch in Utah County. So we are the nonprofit that's backing the community garden that was built two years ago. I have just our impact report that I wanted to pass out, just to kind of share a little bit about what we do. We love to share our resources with that, and Rachel's gonna talk a little bit about the garden.
Yeah, so I'm the director this year, and I actually have some really fun things that I'm wanting to take the garden to. So as you can see, that some of our opening, or some of the programs that I'm wanting to do, is this Soul Garden, where we get together and do like different types of meditations at the garden, working with like the Krishna Temple to do yoga, introducing other wellness practitioners to just host an event there. We also have like deeply rooted, I'm working with different grief support counselors to hold a session at the garden. And yeah, just a lot of really fun things. Our opening is April 26th. The entire community is welcome to come, see what we're doing, help out, and it's just gonna be a fun season.
Any questions for the community garden folks?
I don't necessarily have a question, but I just want to say thank you. My dad has a blot down there, my grandma has her name on it, and it's like, it makes his life all summer long. So thank you very much.
Yeah, we love it.
That's what we're, yeah, we just want to be a nice place in the community for people to go and just enjoy and just have a little peace for a little bit.
Location's still at the same place, down by our police station, right on Center Street?
Yep, and we actually have permission now to be a little bit more secure for a little while, so we're gonna be here for a while.
Yeah.
That's awesome.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
None of the cops are still in your produce down there, right? They're?
No.
Thank you, guys. Anyone else for public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to council comments tonight. We'll start with Councilman Carden, if that's okay, then we'll go Councilman Took, we'll go this way, and Councilman Oider will be last.
Awesome, thank you, Mayor. Just two items, first is the arts council, we met this last week, they are gearing up for the youth arts festival. I believe literature will start coming out next month, towards the first month. I believe that they may still be looking for teachers, I'm not 100% positive on that, but youth arts festival will be taking place at the Spanish Fork High School this next year, along with, they are getting ready for the youth theater, or the, not the youth theater, the community theater auditions. That date is forthcoming, but that is Shrek, and they will be looking for people for that. The other thing is, we only have three days left of the legislative session. I just want to publicly thank Seth for the time and effort that he's put in to this legislative session. There's been a lot of, let's say, interesting bills that have come out that he's put a lot of time and effort into. So thank you, Seth, from the council and all that has went into making sure that we get good results in what's going on up there. That's all I got, Mayor.
Perfect. Thank you, Councilman Carden. Councilman Took?
Thank you, Mayor. I've got a couple items, but before I jump into them, I'd like to give a little time to our president of the Chamber of Commerce, who's with us this evening, Kathleen Levitt.
Hello, thank you, Councilman Took, for the time. So a busy month for us and subsequent months coming up, but I just wanted to share a few activities that we have going on in our business community. We are getting our Women in Business initiative back up and going, so we are doing our first Women in Business event work, titling them Women Unite Wednesdays. We're hosting our first one on March 12th from 2:00 to 3:00 PM, so kind of to stagger some of those meeting times. And that's gonna be hosted at SOFO Survival. We already have 55 women registered for this event, so it's, I think our Women in Business series is gonna be really popular. So we're excited to kick off that program and get it back up. March 20th is our new networking luncheon, hosted at the Hampton Inn. Grace Ainger, owner of Veronica Michaels, will be teaching on cancer screening resources for business owners. There's lots of them, so she's gonna be educating on employers, how they can make sure their employees are properly screened. March 25th is a ribbon cutting at Quick Quack Car Wash at 4:00 PM. The Quick Quack location is 44 West Summit Parkway in Spanish Fork. Then March 27th is a ribbon cutting at Tabitha's Way, their new building for their food pantry that's at 10:00 AM. Their new location is just right across the street from their old location at 50 East, 100 North in Spanish Fork. April 19th is the annual Easter egg hunt at 9:00 AM, so we're getting the ball rolling on that. And then May 14th is the Chamber Rotary Scholarship Golf Tournament, so work is underway for that as well. So those are the highlights of what we've got going on. Thank you, everyone.
Well, I just have three more items real quick here. So first off, I was able to attend, some of the council members recently, the annual Spanish Fork Fire and EMS banquet. It was my first time being able to attend this event, and I loved it. And I was thinking this evening, as we were honoring, you know, earlier, our employees of the quarter, how many, with all the new staff we have, how many female EMS and firefighters we have. And as we drive around, my family drives around the city, we often will see these women driving the fire trucks or the ambulances, and it's just so inspirational for my all-girls to see that and to think, I can do that, wow, I could actually become that. And so it's just, I love where we're going, I love all these new faces in this department of the city. So anyway, wonderful time there. Next up, we had, and I've got a couple things to say about this, and a couple pictures as well that Jack may have to show, but the Miss Spanish Fork Pageant was held recently. I brought a couple pictures this evening, and it was just fantastic. Councilman Carden was able to attend it with me. Our outgoing Miss Spanish Fork, right there next to me, Hope King, did an amazing job serving the city this past year, her and her royalty, her attendance. And I was just able to give them their scholarships, and just a special, for me, first-time opportunity to do that, and spend some time with them, and just share the love from the city and how we appreciate their, you know, representing us so well. They attend so many events, in the heat or the cold, and they're always just such great examples, especially to the youth. Also, I think there's a picture in here of the new royalty, there it is, there we are. So we have, the new Miss Spanish Fork is Maddie Smith. Madison Bertane is an attendant, and also Dakota Hughlin is also an attendant. We will have them come to council meetings soon and introduce themselves and share a little bit about them and their new journey here. But, and then my daughter's with Hope King, just a fun little picture there, they just think she's wonderful. So just a couple of quick thoughts about the Miss Spanish Fork program. I don't, most of you probably don't understand it like I do, I've been fortunate to be involved with the Miss Utah Organization and judge for 20 years, and if you don't know much about the Miss Spanish Fork program, it's really a great one in the state, in fact, it's in the nation, honestly. We get a lot of support. And so the Miss America Organization is kind of the mother program, then you've got the Miss Utah Organization, then you've got the local pageants, and, excuse me, Miss Spanish Fork is one of the local competitions, but we have, the director of Miss Utah actually lives in Spanish Fork, and we had, the Miss Utah was there that night with us, the new Miss Utah's teen was also there, just a ton of support for our program. We have an amazing set of directors and just a very well-run program every year. And a fun fact, I learned about that evening, so Miss Spanish Fork that evening was the first to be, first queen to be crowned in the 2026 local competition cycle for Miss America. So that means of all the local pageants in the nation, we're the first ones to have, to crown a queen. So pretty cool, actually. We're on top of it, we get right after it, and I love that we start early with our pageant cycle. But yeah, again, we'll have them come to a meeting soon and learn more about them, and you'll love them, no doubt. Just one last thing for me, last night I was able to spend some time with the Parks and Recreation Committee and our director Dale Robinson here, we were able to do another tour of the rec center. I was like a kid in the candy store, I tried not to take pictures, but I did, I hope it's okay Dale, that I share a couple more, if we've got them. I just, it's amazing, I've been on a couple tours now of it, and it's just amazing, all the changes, and this one really kind of shook me with all of the new things with it. We were able to, yeah, our whole committee came and able to go upstairs, it's actually us upstairs on one of the tracks, and you can see the upper track above my head there, it's gonna be fantastic. And then just the competition pool right there, you can kind of see the progress on that, and then the dive pool there. And it's just coming together so quickly, and seven to eight months, I believe, we'll be in business. And it's amazing that we're already there, so, sorry Dale, it's not the most, the greatest picture of you I took it.
It's a bird.
But, but anyway, I just, we had a great evening, and it was good to get an update on where the rec center, the Fit City Center is. That's all I've got, Mayor.
Very cool. Thank you, Councilman Took, appreciate that. Councilman Marshall?
Thank you, just one thing, I too got to attend the fire and EMS banquet last week? It's all blurred together. Super professional group, chief else, great job. I think one that, one thing that just really was really special was the invitation from the group back to the, or the retirees that came, really honored their work and their commitment, and really took sort of homage to the fact that they were, it was a volunteer organization, that's the roots of it, and I think everyone there really understands that that's where that came from, and it was good to see that those folks were there in attendance. And so we're just like, wow, this is where we're at today, it's pretty cool, we're in good hands. That's it for me.
Thank you, Councilman Marshall. Councilwoman Beck?
Okay, I have a couple things. Last week I was able to travel to Washington DC with our power agency, it's UMPA, which stands for Utah Municipal Power Agency. There are six cities that work together to provide the best power to Spanish Fork, and we were able to meet with our congressman at the Capitol. We met with Owens Curtis Lee Malloy about the different policies that we're working on. We encouraged them to prioritize infrastructure, policies for power, to support partnerships, to keep our energy costs low for our residents. And they were all very hopeful with this new administration, that they're going to be able to make some powerful impacts that we were excited to hear about. Fun fact, London, I saw Miss Utah coming out of Malloy's office as we were going in, so it was fun to see our local congressmen in their offices at work, doing their thing. So yesterday morning, I was able to attend the Mills on Wills kickoff event for March, and they just shared some really important things that I thought I would pass along here. Our senior neighbors need help. Unfortunately, Utah is ranked number one in the country in social isolation and malnutrition deaths in seniors. And our lieutenant governor, Deidra Henderson, was there, and she said, Utah loves to be number one in things, but not in this. We have a lot of room for improvement, and our governor and lieutenant governor are really working on new ideas of how we can make a positive impact in our seniors' lives. 60% of the recipients report that their volunteers are the only ones they see in a day. And if I can share a quick story, one of the volunteers that takes meals, he takes meals five days a week. Most people just do one, this gentleman up in the Heber area do five days a week. He went to a senior's home, nobody answered, and so he walked around the house, and the window was cracked, so he just yelled in, hello, anybody home? And she yelled, help. And so he went back to the front door, it was unlocked, he found her in her bedroom, and she had fallen and broken her hip and had laid there for two days not moving. Like, these are powerful stories that our seniors need, this daily contact where people can go in, make sure that they have that face-to-face interaction, but they're also receiving a nutritious meal. And so there are 500 seniors on a waiting list in Utah to receive food and this contact, and there's a variety of ways to help. You can do, volunteer your time, you can take food out once a week, it's maybe an hour, it's just like a way to bless other people's lives. If you don't have time, another option is money. There's a QR code, but you can go to their website, it's M-O-W-S-U-W.org, and it's M for M. And you can just Google that, Mills for Wills, and you can make a monthly donation or a one-time donation. They're getting really close to being able to tell all those 500 seniors, we can help you, but we need to step up and help our seniors. And if you're not able to do either one of those, maybe just a friendly reminder to watch this, watch out for the seniors in your own neighborhood. Check in on them, make sure they're okay with a text, a phone call, just a hello, or, you know, a quick little visit, so. Oh, and then Saturday, most of us were able to attend Bills and Bagels, which I heard two people comment, I thought there were gonna be bagels here. It's actually French toast, but French toast and Bills don't sound good, so they are keeping the name Bills and Bagels. And French toast is a lot better, I think, because they also give you bacon sausage and scrambled eggs. But all of our local representatives and senators, even the lieutenant governor, were there, telling us what they've been working on this legislative session and what things were in the pipeline for this week. So I just want to publicly thank all of them for all the work. They are, they're up there, day in and day out, are working tirelessly to balance the budget and have our best interests in mind. And I appreciate the relationship we all have with them, as well as staff, where we can reach out and text them and really encourage them, hey, we need you to... legislative session and what things were in the pipeline for this week. So I just want to publicly thank all of them for all the work. They are, they're up there, day in and day out, are working tires tirelessly to balance the budget and have our best interests in mind. And I appreciate the relationship we all have with them, as well as staff, where we can reach out and text them and really encourage them, hey, we, we need you to really look at this bill because it's going to be in the best interest of our residents. So I just want to tell them thank you. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilwoman Beck.
Mayor, just going with what Stacy had said, they are still looking for people in the Spanish Fork area for Tuesdays and Fridays for Mills on Wills.
Oh, thank you.
So those are specific days, just during that lunchtime hour, if you have availability on Tuesdays and Fridays. So you go to, I believe, that same website to go ahead and put your name in if you can, if you have some spare time. And it, like Stacy said, it takes about an hour. So.
Okay. Thanks, Jesse.
Perfect. Thank you. Councilman Eider?
Thank you, Mayor. So just to echo and repeat what Kathleen had mentioned, March 27th is the ribbon cutting for Tabitha's Way. This past week, I had the opportunity to go and visit with Wendy Osborne, who's the founder and runs Tabitha's Way. And she shared a lot of the great things that are happening down there and how fortunate and grateful they are to have a new building with more space to be able to help those individuals in our community that have food insecurities. To go along with that, I just wanted to make sure that everyone was aware that March 15th is Feed Utah. So Food Drive says, this statewide food drive will help provide food to the estimated 415,000 Utahns who face hunger, many of whom are still struggling to feed their families due to inflation and high housing costs. Even more alarming is that one in six Utah kids are unsure where their next meal will come from. Tabitha's Way is a great resource in our community for those that are struggling and just, just trying to get by. Maybe they're out of, out of work, still trying to find a job and just need a little help to get through a difficult time. And so put that on your calendars, please. March 15th, there will be drop off locations at Macy's here in town and also at Tabitha's Way that you can go and then take some food. Just a great resource to help those that are struggling. Other thing that I had, along with what Stacy had mentioned with our seniors, if you know a senior that's struggling socially, struggling with food, invite them to come down to our Senior Center. Every Monday and Thursday, first Friday of every month, this Friday, this coming Friday, is the 65th birthday of the Spanish Fork Senior Center. So we would invite all seniors to come down and participate and be be a part of something that's that's great. So get involved, come and join our Senior Center. It's great people, great food, great interactions. So come and be a part of it. And then final thing that I've got, Mayor, March is National Pet Vaccination Month. So on that note, the South Utah Valley Animal Shelter is holding a low cost vaccination clinic on Saturday, March 8th, so this coming Saturday, from 10 a.m. to 12 p.m. at the Spanish Fork Fairgrounds in the Pondrosa Building. This is both for Spanish Fork and Salem communities. They're combining this this time around because the location where they'll they'll be doing it in Salem isn't quite ready, ready to host. But come down. There's free microchipping with the purchase of any animal license. So bring your cats, bring your dogs, and bring them down and and get them vaccinated and do your part to help control the animal population by having your pet spayed or neutered. Thank you, Mayor. That's all I had.
Better than Bob Barker. Good, good work. Thank you, Councilman Eider. Appreciate that as well. Just one thing, really quick for for my comment tonight. We had a Main Street open house a couple of weeks ago now, one in the the morning and one in the evening. One in the morning was for business owners on Main Street, one in the evening for residents to to come by and and see these maps laid out on a, on big tables and mark them up and and give recommendations, make notes. Appreciate the public's involvement in that. Appreciate businesses coming and listening. I want to just, just here in a public meeting, call out the three, maybe the three biggest misconceptions that I've seen a little bit before those meetings, but but certainly since those meetings too, that that are just, just that, just misconceptions. Number one, that, and there's other information on the city's website, and you can, you can find the study we're we're doing on Main Street and have been in process for for years here. But you can even see from this picture that I took that night. Number one misconception, people were saying, we don't want to become Provost's Center Street. This is not Provost's Center Street. Main Street in Spanish Fork will not be Provost's Center Street. If you've been on Provost's Center Street, there's angled parking, a huge median, and it's not made to efficiently move vehicles. It's made to, I don't know, stall vehicles and probably cause accidents for backing out the the way you do it. But it's, it's certainly not the intent to move traffic through Provost's Center Street. So, so nothing that you're seeing here in these drawings, nothing that we're working on for Spanish Fork's Main Street is Provost's Center Street. So if you hear that from somebody, just correct them and say, nope, I talked to the mayor. It's not Provost's Center Street. Second misconception, okay, we don't like Payson's Main Street, and we don't want this to become Payson's Main Street. If you've been in Payson recently, that construction now complete is a one way street with angled parking as well. Not made to efficiently move traffic through Payson's Main Street, which is the exact opposite of what we're trying to accomplish here on Spanish Fork's Main Street. So again, you hear somebody say, or type, or text, or social media post, this is Payson's Main Street? You can say, I talked to the mayor. It's not Payson's Main Street. Third misconception is, the real problem about Main Street is parking. And and I've heard this, Kathleen's heard this from the chamber for for many years. We've been working on parking. That is not an overnight solvable issue by any means. But I've been elected now in in my 12th year of public service. We have spent money, taxpayer money for parking on Main Street in Spanish Fork, on the 300 block, on the 200 block, and on the Center Street block of Main Street. We've tried to to do it as well on the, on the 100 block of Main Street as well, and hope, hope those discussions pop back up at some point. But those were private property owners that weren't interested in making that parking work. But taxpayers, your money has been spent to the tune of over a million dollars on parking downtown Spanish Fork's Main Street, public parking over about the past decade, I would say, probably a little less than than a decade. And so, so just know that that's a priority as well. That's a misconception that that, again, I I found coming out of that meeting, that some people were saying, well, there's no parking, and the city doesn't care about parking, the city hasn't studied parking, the city hasn't bought parking. It's just the opposite. Your taxpayer dollars have been spent on parking down on on Main Street. And and as we continue to take input and study this plan and formalize this plan, just know that the intent there is to, is to efficiently move traffic through safely through our Main Street while obviously having a thriving downtown district, continuing to improve the the walkability, the safety of our, of our downtown district, not to, not to do the opposite, not to injure it. That's, I think, been the top of mind discussion of all of us elected officials of, as we've seen these plans, has been, what, what can we do to improve Main Street, improve business, improve traffic flow, and make it safer and and more effective for businesses and residents to be down there and and patronize businesses. So just know that's the intent. And and we'll work through those, those, those plans and issues. I wanted that to open that up, but I didn't tell the council that, that that's what I was gonna say.
Can I add one?
Please.
So there's also a misconception that our Fiesta Parade could no longer go down Spanish Fork Main Street. Just remind citizens that the parade currently goes around the park, and that road is is quite a bit more narrow than what would be left to go down Main Street. You'll be able to sit on one side of the highway now and have the parade on the other. So there's plenty of room for the park, as well as the three things that you mentioned, Mike. I think those are important. I mean, I don't know how many times I've heard that this is, I don't want Provost, Provost's Center Street.
You're not getting it.
I heard from the mayor tonight, that it's not Provost's Center Street.
Yeah.
Speaking of the parade, doesn't the Provo Freedom Festival happen down University?
That's in fact.
What's on University?
Medians.
Medians.
I feel like it looks almost similar to what.
It's very, very similar. Except there's a bus down the middle of it.
Yeah, there is a bus lane right down the middle of it, right? So I mean, if, it has happened in other parades, too.
But if you have in mind that it's Provost's Center Street, then the parade doesn't work.
Then it doesn't work.
So I think it's just, it's all of what context you have in your mind as you think about this. And I think those are, those are great misconceptions to clear up as much as we possibly can, that it's, it's in fact what it looks like there, not Provost's Center Street or Payson's Main Street.
I have something to add, too. And I, correct me if I'm wrong, but we're currently working or functioning like as a C minus. Does that sound familiar? And within a few short years, we're going to be functioning at an F?
It's getting worse.
So we don't have a lot of time. Like, we think it's bad now. If we don't do anything, it's just going to get a lot worse. Yeah. And besides, I don't want to sprain my ankle when parking on Main Street and getting out and falling in the gutter.
Darren at UDOT, when I went to the meeting, I asked him that. He says we're currently at an F.
Oh, we're currently at an F?
That's what he told me.
Oh, okay.
I don't know. I don't know what that looks like.
I'm, yeah, just to be super clear, that you can graduate from Spanish Fork High School with Fs. So it's okay at times, from experience. I think there are days that it is an F, yes, which means it's bumper to bumper, you can't move, that kind of thing. But overall, I don't think that it's, that's the case. But, I mean, you take out a couple of those left turns, and you immediately improve flow through the entire corridor really, really quickly. You know, there's, there's work to do. I mean, I don't think this, this discussion tonight is about trying to convince anyone one way or the other.
Right.
Here are the facts. Now with this set of facts, draw, you know, conclusions from those.
We, we just want to have conversation and continue to have conversations up here in public meetings and input from the public. But we, we want to do it starting from the point of of things not, of things not being incorrect. And if we start from a point of, well, I don't want it to be Payson's Main Street, perfect, we're there. I don't want it to be Provost's Center Street, perfect. We're, we're, we're starting from the right, right point. And and I still want parking on Main Street because I like to park in front of the place that I like to go inside. Perfect. There's still going to be parking on Main Street as as well. It'll look different in the future, and it'll look different because we need to be proactive before we just can continue to get worse. And again, I know I've, I've said this in meetings before, and held up this old book that looks like it's old enough to be the Bible, but it, but it was from 1913 ordinances of of Spanish Fork that a, a gentleman gave me. And and it called out the congested district back then of Third South, or, excuse me, 100 South to Fourth North in in, on Main Street in Spanish Fork. So it's been congested for a long time. There's been changes to it.
Shane, you probably remember when they took out the hitching poles.
Well, that's too long ago.
So there were, there were issues. There's changes. There's, there's going to continue to be changes. But just know that the, the intent there is to obviously improve it, improve the flow, improve pedestrian capabilities, improve transit, improve the businesses being able to operate on Spanish Fork's Main Street. Our tax, our tax money's already been spent down there, excessive a million dollars trying to, trying to improve parking. And we're, we're going to continue to spend money to try to improve Main Street and downtown. So reach out, continue to reach out with any questions. Jack, am I correct in saying there's some stuff on the city's website now about our Main Street study and and things like that, right?
Yes. And then it leads to the UDOT page that talks about it as well. And it's got crash information and where we are in the process. So.
So do as much of a deep dive as you want on that data to be informed. And then, and then let's, let's make some informed decisions together as a community so we can, we can continue to thrive downtown here in Spanish Fork. Okay, that's all I have. Now to staff reports, anything that that we have from weeks ago in a council meeting that we need to update the public on?
Jordan, you want to talk rooftop?
So Corey and I sit on the Technical and Accounting Committee for the South Utah Valley Solid Waste District. So the Solid Waste District is a separate government entity of which we are a member city, along with a handful of other cities. So the district owns the new transfer station that was recently built, and they take our waste to their landfill or to be recycled. They're currently working on their budget for next fiscal year, as we are. Their tentative proposed budget right now has a tonnage fee increase from $40 a ton to $46 a ton. $2 per ton of that is to replace some revenue, another revenue source that they're getting rid of, which is a rooftop fee. So that rooftop fee has been assessed to each member city based off of the number of rooftops. The thing that the member cities had concerns about was, there's other customers that bring their garbage to the, the transfer station besides the member cities, and they weren't paying any sort of base fee like we were. Like, so we proposed that we get rid of that, and the district recouped that half a million dollars that we're getting from just the tonnage. There's also some increased costs in the landfill that's causing the, a $2 increase to the tonnage as well. And then there's some other costs with labor and some other things that are pushing that from 40 to 42, 44, and then up to the proposed 46 right now. So we're working through some thoughts on, can we tweak this? And can we, can we get it down one or $2 per ton? Council Member Marshall sits on the board of the Solid Waste District, and he's our voice on there for that. But wanted you guys to be aware of those discussions. Anything to add, Corey, Shane, on those items?
I think only one comment I'd, I'd mention. It's been a while since the rooftop fee has been updated, as far as what percentage is paid by which cities. With the growth that Spanish Fork has seen lately, if that fee continues, our proportion of it would be much larger than it has been today. So we would see a natural increase in that base rate if it stays, versus just going with a tonnage rate, which spreads it to those who are using. So I think we would see a proportionate increase. Am I right in saying that, Jordan? Just with realigning based on population growth in the last handful of years.
Yeah.
So the simple ask is, put it all into a user fee?
Yeah. Imagine that we, so everyone that has our drinking water pays a base fee, but imagine some of the residents weren't paying the base fee. And that's why we're proposing getting rid of that, that base fee where only some of the customers of the district were paying it. So that's one of the, the issues that we're working through with this next year's budget.
The way that's happened is, if I live in a, if I live in a development where I have a communal garbage can, they don't have a garbage bill from us. And so one of the proposals was, well, just tack that dollar fee on them, like it is inside of the can rate that you and I paid. And that just doesn't feel like we've got a connection to that service. They're not collecting, we're not, they're not paying for their garbage the same way. And so that service fee through the tonnage seems to be the most equitable way of, of, of getting that, that revenue needed to provide the service, because they, their communal can is being dumped, and the, the tonnage is being paid through their provider. And that provider's charging them, you know, whatever the tonnage is, that gets wrapped into their monthly fee that they pay as a, as a development or a community through however they, they pay their, for their utility. So that seems to be a good way. And I think, is it fair to say they're, they're coming around to the idea? That's their proposal now?
Yeah, that is their, their proposed budget right now has that rooftop fee going away, which is what we have been be supportive of. You know, like Seth says, they're having a garbage fee on, you know, an apartment building that doesn't, where they don't get a can, but throwing a garbage fee on their utility bill. And when they don't have a can, we're going to get a lot of phone calls in the utility office saying, why am I being billed for a garbage fee when you don't provide garbage services to me? It's a good question, right?
Thank you, Jordan.
Yep.
Corey, Shane. Mayor, we're three days left in the session. I'm happy to do a 45 minute review of things so far. What, is it, you want that now?
Really fun.
Or maybe at the end?
Yeah, yeah, that sounds really fun. Yeah, what, what, what's been the hottest, the hottest thing on Capitol Hill in, in Utah this year that?
You know, I, I really only pay attention to city related bills. So I'm sure there are other topics that have been maybe to some people of greater interest than, than things that, that I or we as cities have been watching. A lot of struggles and a lot of discussions about the relationship between services and, and A lot of struggles and a lot of discussions about the relationship between services and, and roles and responsibilities of cities, state, and the relationships that we have. Some discussions around public safety and, and again, that, that role or relationship. The last few days have, we spent a lot of time on, on a bill, Senate Bill 337. And that one's been just a lot of discussion and, and working together with the governor to try to craft something that's called the Beehive Development Agency. And it's a, it would be a new agency that would be created. And it would have the ability to work on what the governor is hoping to do. He's calling them generational projects. They would go after very large, very large things. They might be a large energy project or maybe a large, a large company that wants to put in a, a headquarters-type facility here. Things that are of very large nature. And he wants to be able to ensure a path forward. And, and so the discussion started at somewhat at odds with cities. And to the governor and his team's absolute credit, they've, they've completely understood the value and importance of having cities at the table and knowing that cities and counties are where whatever that generational project will land, it's going to be in one of our cities. Maybe to be candid with the residents that may be watching this, one of the challenges that happens with development is this feeling of, we really, really need this. Just don't put it in my town. You know, we as a state need this. Don't put it near me. And as long as this thing that we need is over there, that's awesome, right? And that's something that's killing every state and every, in, in the union of, you know, things that, that we need. For example, we are gonna, this isn't going to happen tomorrow, but if we don't do something different, we're going to run out of power. You know, we don't, you've spent some time on this, Councilwoman Beck, right? In terms of back in DC last week, we need more power generation across the nation with, with things that are happening. And, and, and so as a state, the governor is focused on, what does he call it? Project 1.21 gigawatts? Okay, I added the .21. But, but trying to do some things to, to enhance our ability to create and have the power here that we need for sustained growth. I really appreciated the governor's passionate plea that if we are not doing some of these things that are difficult, our children will not have the Utah that we enjoy today. That we will create some challenges and consume some of the resources that, that we're not replacing as we consume. So we've gotten that bill to a wonderful place again in collaboration with the governor. And that's, that's taken everybody a lot of time. But hopefully it gets, it gets approved in a way that we can, we can work together. And then I think as cities, it's our turn to step forward and say, this is a generational project and we want it here so that we can do our part to, to keep Utah growing strong, whatever that may be. You know, it needs to fit. But this maybe need to be here and that may need to be there. So that's one that's been heavy the last four or five days. One of 900.
One of many, yeah.
Yeah. I think there's around 900 bills. When you start having Senate bills in the 300s and House bills in the 500s.
It's too many.
You've got a lot of bills. That's a lot. So it's, it's continuing to grow every year. I'll stop there, Mayor.
Thanks for the commitment, again, the time, the energy and the effort. Again, I think we've told residents already, but your, your cities relied on heavily in, in examples of, of what we do and how we work with our state partners. So it's credit to you and our staff and, and people involved up there. Look forward to the session ending, just like everybody else. And, and then we'll get a, a rundown, kind of the whole session from you as well in another meeting. Okay, if there's anything else the council needs to do in council comments or staff reports? If not, it takes us to item eight consent items, A, B, and C on consent items. If there's no questions for those items, I'd entertain a motion approving the consent items.
I make a motion to approve the consent items.
Second.
Motion made by Councilwoman Beck, seconded by Councilman Marshall. Roll call vote, Councilman Took.
Yes.
Councilman Carden.
Yes.
Councilman Euler.
Yes.
Councilman, Councilwoman Beck.
Yes.
And Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
Consent items are approved. New business A and B tonight. The first one is a resolution approving school resource officer or the SRO interlocal agreements with Nevo School District.
Yes, this is just the interlocal agreement between the city and Nevo School District in regards to our school resource officers' assignments within Maple Mountain High School, Spanish Fork High School landmark. And then we have an officer that splits her time between Diamond Fork Middle School and Spanish Fork Junior High. So this interlocal agreement basically just states what the role of the school resource officer is as well as the role of Nevo School District and their administration. It split the costs of our officers. They pay half the officer's salary as well as the benefits for the time that they spend within the school. Any questions?
Questions for Chief on this?
Okay, thank you.
Chief, no questions on A. I'd entertain a motion approving item A.
I move to approve the resolution approving SRO interlocal agreements with Nevo School District.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Euler, seconded by Councilman Carden. A roll call vote here, Councilwoman Beck.
Yes.
Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
Councilman Took.
Yes.
Councilman Carden.
Yes.
And Councilman Euler.
Yes.
Item A is approved. Appreciate the school district's partnership in that for sure, right? Chief, working together with Rick Nielsen and the, the district has always been a, a good partnership for us. Item B, Taxiway Bravo Letter of Support. Mr. Corey Pierce.
Thank you, Mayor Council. This isn't necessarily a new item. We've talked about Taxiway Bravo and some of the challenges there. Just wanted to give an update and a little bit of background and then a request for your support in seeking some funding. So as, as you know, we're, we're experiencing significant growth at the airport, doubling our hangar space. But that also brings planes on both sides of the runway, which is where the taxiway is necessary. You can see the increase in operations at the airport. We have continued to rise and plan to continue. It's the busiest general aviation airport in the state. And if you include all airports in the state, it's number four as far as operations of planes taking off and landing at the airport. Just for context, Salt Lake International has about 319,000 operations in 2024, where we were at about 120. But Salt Lake International, and it's a different, we're moving people, or more people, I should say. But still, there is four runways and lots of opportunities to get planes on and off the ground where we're relying on one runway and today, one taxiway. So you can see in the colors here, I'm never good at this pointer. There we go. Taxiway Alpha, I'm getting used to the airport lingo here, is on this kind of south side of the airport runway. Taxiway Bravo will be on the north side. And as we increase hangar space here along Main Street, FAA has currently funded Phase 1 to the tune of about $2 million, which will give access to the runway. The challenge is as planes take off or land, depending on wind direction, one of those directions, when they exit the runway or enter, they'll have to go down Taxiway Alpha and then cross the runway to get back to their hangar or wherever they're headed. And it's just a conflict point. On the busier days at the airport, if you stand there, about one plane a minute is going to do some sort of maneuver to the runway. And so as you're trying to cross that, hoping there isn't a plane coming down, it just gets really, really busy. So we've been working with Congressman Owens on potential funding. And part of what we're looking towards is an application for community project funding grant. That's appropriations money from the federal government. We're kind of waiting for the notification of that application processes open. It's not quite, but typically it happens in the spring. Part of that application is we're looking for letters of support. So that's, that's what we've drafted for the council to look at and we hope to get the mayor's signature. We're also talking to county leaders throughout the valley and other people to help give support here. Those, those letters of support go a long way in the review of the application and help these appropriations committees select the projects that, that could use the funding. So that's what's in front of you and appreciate your support at the airport.
Mayor, I think a couple of things about this that are worth highlighting. What we're looking for is, we'll be asking Congressman Owens for about $3.5 million, right? And then we think the, this phase two, so you can see on this graphic, Phase 1 is funded and, and construction is starting. Design and, and then the construction will happen. And then Phase 2 is not funded. The FAA will fund that eventually, but right now in their funding cycles, they're probably six to 10 years out. So we're seeking to advance that, right?
It's currently not on the 10-year plan.
Okay, so 10, 11 to 12, yeah. So with, with this community project funding grant is we're looking for. We, we'll need some additional funds from the state and I think that's something we can work on. If we can get three and a half identified and awarded from Congressman Owens for this amount. And we've, we've, as we've talked with his staff, we feel like that three and a half amount is a really good, like a safe number that, it's hard to get five. So three and a half for a project like that, they, they felt like this would, this would have a very strong possibility to be funded. We would also then turn to the state for some additional funding to get us to the, the majority of the rest of the way to that $5 to $5.5 million mark. And, and that's something we would look to have appropriated next January, not this session, of course, this ending this week, but perhaps next session. That would probably coincide with about the time the money from the feds would become available. So that would work perfectly. But we would be able to go to the state and say, we've got this federal match or this federal amount, we need a state match. And, and that would likely loosen up the possibility for those funds from the state. I don't know if you've had a chance, hopefully everybody's had a chance to look at the draft letter. I think one add I'd, I want to suggest is that we put all of your names on there. I think it's a little goofy that we need to submit a, a letter of support for our own application. Quite frankly, it's coming from us. We're supporting our own selves. Obviously, we're supporting it because we're putting in the application. But they did specifically say they want an application from the city, sorry, a letter of recommendation. And I think if we're going to do that, I think it'd be best to have all seven, or all six of your signatures on there. And, and then we would have that, that we could add in there. I don't know if there's any questions you have about that. I know this is something that's heavy on the airport users' minds. And, and I think some have expressed some frustrations in different settings. And I think this is a very important step and this is us not doing nothing. This is us being very proactive to help resolve some of those concerns. And frankly, I think this is the best, best shot we have at, at resolving the, the concerns about Taxiway Bravo the soonest.
Or we could actually just charge those users more money to use it and build it, their funds.
Yeah, and it would take a long time probably to get that $5 million amount, but yeah.
Depends how bad they want to use it.
And what you charge, yeah.
And we are looking at all sorts of options to try to help. What's difficult because of a lot of airport infrastructure is funded by the FAA. Things like users' fees, they review and, and have a say whether we can or can't. And sometimes where it's federal money coming in, adding extra, they kind of frown upon.
Or lack of federal money coming in.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep.
Absolutely.
Something Doj should look into.
Thank you.
I'm glad I didn't put that one in.
Dang it.
Well, I was looking at you.
I noticed none of you are going to speak up and say that the mayor's signature is probably enough. But that's what Seth is kind of saying, that the mayor's signature is not enough.
It's not what I said.
That's what I heard.
I think it's powerful.
Oh, I heard it.
Okay, that's what I heard.
That's what I heard.
Those are the only words I heard.
I would, I, I, I would like adding all your signatures on it. I think the one paragraph that the public, if you don't read this document that we're seeing up here, that Corey touched on, "Spanish Fork Airport is not just a local asset. It serves as a key piece of Utah's aviation infrastructure. Federal investment is project where we'll ensure the airport continues to meet the needs of our growing aviation community while bolstering economic opportunities across the region." I think it, it is important, the regional aspect of our airport. We're lucky that it's in our city. But with Provo's expansion and what they do as an airport that's very different from ours, sure puts us in a place where a lot of economic activity is happening. And for along the Wasatch Front, it is a huge piece of the puzzle. So I, I would support this letter and support all of you being on it. But I can't make the motion. Somebody needs to make that motion. Councilwoman Beck, you're on the airport board and so is Councilman Carden, right?
Jesse, should we take it from here?
Yeah.
Okay. I move to approve the Taxiway Bravo Letter of Support and to include the council's signatures, not just the mayor's.
Will we be above or below the mayor's signature? I was just wondering.
We probably know our place.
I'm not going to opine on that one. I'm already in the doghouse.
Second. Motion made by Councilwoman Beck, seconded by Councilman Carden. Roll call vote here, Councilman Euler.
Yes.
Councilwoman Beck.
Yes.
Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
Councilman Took.
Yes.
And Councilman Carden.
Yes.
Item B is approved there. Takes us to the discussion part of our agenda, the general plan. Mr. David G.
Night, too.
Yeah, that's all right.
Forgot?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Two things to touch on tonight. I'm going to give a quick update with a roadmap for some next steps going forward. And then we want to get some direction on a specific thing that I think makes sense to memorialize in the general plan. So start with getting warmed up here. Your agenda is fairly light tonight. The planning commissions isn't tomorrow. So we are going to do a deep dive with the planning commission. That's probably what's going to make your agenda kind of hefty tomorrow night. Talking about goals, policies, we're going to get into land use map with them, land use designations. We will circle back with the council kind of mid-mont based on what we get from the planning commission tomorrow night. It's very appropriate for the planning commission to be taking a lead on a project like this. And it's kind of how we have things mapped out. So you'll be getting work that will come to you after it's been vetted with the planning commission in the hopes of having a product in early May that's ready to present for the public. Start giving them an opportunity to review it, provide comments and that sort of thing in advance of public hearings in May. Tonight, I want to talk a little bit about growth management, policy, potentially can tie with that. This is a list of kind of the main headings of goals and policies that right now we're working on. I'm not going to spend a lot of time going through this language. You'll have access to that here after the planning commission meeting tomorrow night. I want to go straight to this language here. It's pretty raw. It's new and it has to do with how ultimately you as the owners of the city's land use plan would like to direct us to work with property owners, developers, applicants, different folks that want to see land uses change in the community. So some of this, I think, is kind of a no-brainer. For example, just the idea that we would follow review processes that ensure that city requirements are met, that best practices are followed and that good communication exists. Like who, who wouldn't expect that to happen? The two policies then that follow A41 and A42 talk about simply making sure that projects that are proposed meet different requirements and that aside from meeting certain requirements, somebody typically staff, you know, looking out for, making sure that things are happening in the best possible way. I will probably continue to use a phrase like best practices. Cities, Spanish Fork, we've learned over the years that some things work better than others. And not all of works well gets codified in our zoning code or other documents. So simply having some savvy overseeing things becomes important. Now, for what we want to talk about tonight, and we can take as long or as little time reviewing this as you'd like, but really looking tonight to get some guidance on the idea of promoting clear communication between city staff, developers, and other city officials by providing informal opportunities for developers to, to discuss proposals in open meetings with the Development Review Committee, Planning Commission, and City Council. So it's been about 10 years since we started offering developers and since we started offering developers an opportunity to provide ideas that get reviewed. We call it a concept review. It's informal. We don't charge people to submit an application for a concept review. We have seen concept reviews that it's a little bit of an exaggeration, but kind of the equivalent of a layout that somebody might have scribbled on the back of a napkin is a phrase that gets used sometime. Something that's really, really rough and simple and something that people haven't put a lot of effort into. We've worked with people to try to get something better from that as part of a proposal that people would like to get feedback on before they make a big investment in a property and preparing plans. You've seen us bring to you different projects in recent years. Typically, when we've brought something to the city council, it's had some heft to it or it's had some unique characteristic to it. And something that we have felt, or maybe property owners have felt, you know, really requires some amount of particular attention from the city council. Most often in development review committee meetings, which are meetings that are typically held weekly, we review one or two concept plans. Most often before somebody submits an application that they made a lot of investment in, they submit a concept plan. Simple layout showing where streets and lots and maybe commercial buildings, that type of thing would be on a site. That's what we see. We can review it as staff, give people feedback. And they can take that then into consideration when they start to invest big money into designing projects. Does any of this sound foreign to any of you? Kind of by way of how things work with that particular part of the development review process? You're familiar with some things and maybe don't need to mention them by name. But for example, you've seen projects in joint planning commission and city council meetings, projects where applicants, they haven't yet made a formal application to have the city consider a development proposal, but they've invested a lot of still money in preparing exhibits, images, designs, fly-throughs, you know, video basically to demonstrate what their idea is about. And again, most of the time, just kind of used common sense to try to determine what types of projects have risen to a level of, you know, maybe being of interest to the city council or warranting that kind of airtime with you. So particularly tonight, we hope to get some direction from you by way of when you maybe do and don't want to give your time to those involved in some of the steps of the process. We want to be respectful, I think, as we consider this of time. I think that's a big part of sort of evaluating what makes sense to bring to the council. We do that even with the planning commission. Planning commission commonly will see concept plans that we haven't typically brought even to the city council. And sometimes that has created problems. So that's another aspect of what we hope you considers. We kind of talked this through. We want to be respectful of different roles. There are something like 20 different staff people now that have eyes on development applications that get submitted for review. We've grown a lot. And some of that's to address needs that we've identified over the years, to be more thorough and to employ more just professional expertise to making sure that things get right and that problems don't get perpetuated. But that's indicative of a very important role, in my opinion, that we have people playing here in Spanish Fork. I don't care where water valves and streetlights necessarily end up in subdivisions. I assume you don't either. And we don't have to worry about that because somebody else does. It's great. And again, that's just an example of a role. The planning commission plays a role. They play a role that's defined in state law and also in our municipal code by way of helping to vet development proposals. In some cases, the planning commission is the land use authority. Things stop there. In other cases, they make a recommendation to you. They're an advisory body. And then, of course, you play your role ultimately as the legislative body. You do things that nobody else can do. And you're the land use authority when nobody else can be the land use authority. So maybe different things to consider. And one thing that I think we as staff are sensitive of, and it's kind of a balance, in order for somebody to get feedback, they need to present something that can be understood and that's clear. That requires some investment. And you know, back to kind of the back of the napkin idea, when people propose ideas in a really shoddy way, we can't help them. But oftentimes, working with people that, you know, maybe they they're comfortable with investing thousands of dollars to describe their idea. And we love being able to give them feedback before they invest hundreds of thousands of dollars in their idea, understanding that still there are processes that have to be followed. And until the land use authority ultimately makes a decision, there are no guarantees. We don't take votes when we're giving informal feedback on projects and that sort of a thing. And that all being said, again, the question, maybe you want to talk about it, but what do you want us to bring to you? Early on, for example, when we started to talk about developments on the planning commission's agenda tomorrow night for a portion of the Western Distribution Center site to be developed residentially, we talked to the city council. And in that case, we talked to the city council because it was a very distinct change from what the city had always planned for in terms of land use, from industrial to residential. It's a very, very unique consideration by way of access with the property, different things like that, that when compounded with the amount of effort that it would take on the part of an applicant and city staff to try to work through those things, it was really helpful to get some insight from the city council early on. And the forum in which we got that insight was likewise really important. Being able to have a work session with all of you present, when anybody that might care about what's going on could be privy to the conversation and that sort of a thing, is an important part of how we generally want to operate as a city when we're working in that kind of development review realm. I think that project is probably a good example of time that was very well spent early on by getting the city council's feedback. We see other projects, maybe it's by way of scale or just its general nature of not posing things that are necessarily unique or otherwise challenging, that those are some of the ones I start to wonder about. Is this worth trying to get airtime with the city council to discuss? And part of this conversation is the result, I think, of maybe me, the role that I play of not having always gotten that right by way of saying, nah, we'll take care of this at staff level or something like that and not engage with the city council early enough. I'm going to just pause there. Am I on a track now that you guys are following in terms of what we're looking for?
Yeah, I wish I had a good answer for you.
What?
I wish I had a good answer for Dave. It's very difficult balance when one would want to come in front of us and one wouldn't. I think though, are we ready to talk about it or no? Yeah? I'm just going to keep going. Never mind. I would err on the side of asking the applicant, do you want to go in front? I think that we've had over the last, I don't know, couple of months, very short city council meetings. I don't know that if we spent a few minutes on an application, it wouldn't be the end of the world. I think that there could be many opportunities when we weighed in early on and eliminated or reduced the conversation further in the process. So it could actually save us some time as well. So, you know, I wouldn't want, I think it could be as easy as, look, you can have five minutes to present where you're headed, get some feedback from the council, and off you're in merry way. And I think that could save us hours later. So I think it'd be worth it. I think we'd get a good cadence in there. And I think we'd understand what I just said was right or wrong. And we adjust the next opportunity we could get.
I think giving some time limit to it makes sense. But I also think the way that you posed the question in especially some of the projects you talked about, the uniqueness of the project, also along with if it's going, something that specifically is not in the general plan or is a very different land use of that area, I think those are things that 100% would be beneficial to come before us before they go through the process because we had an example of that recently that, you know, didn't turn out so well. And I think the applicant is working through something, you know, more, maybe more digestible. But I think that we could have saved some time for both staff and for the applicant had we had that conversation earlier.
Can I dig at that a little bit? You said, I think you said something like something unique.
Yeah.
And then different than the general plan.
So yeah, something that's.
Maybe fill in some of those. What are some things that you guys would consider unique? I think that's helpful.
I think what Dave just brought up by the Western Distribution.
The PEG project.
Something different than was being planned.
Right, something different than the general plan.
Yes.
Is one of those, yeah.
I think the PEG project from a couple of years ago would be something like that. It was different, something we hadn't seen.
Yeah.
A new type of concept.
Yeah, if we're doing with the new, our.
Land use type.
Our, we have made our first complete neighborhood project, but it was pretty small. But that first one that comes through, right? That might be something that we'd want to look at beforehand.
The challenge with what we're talking about now is if we don't give you criteria to say, here's, in these cases, give them the opportunity to come to the council, then we're saying, use your judgment to offer this or don't offer this. I think that puts you in a really difficult spot.
We'll get it wrong from time to time.
And what's, what do you tell the applicant? I don't believe you should go in front of the city council?
Right.
So it seems like we either need to give you a list of criteria or say, offer to whomever, offer it. I think you will be turned down in a lot of cases because it's not unique or it's not challenging. They just, it's a run-of-the-mill application.
Yeah.
Do you think that?
I think the majority of them will say, I want to go to the council.
Really?
I do.
Before going to DRC?
Yeah.
And I don't, I don't like that idea.
At some point, I do want to talk about the sequence. It could be after it goes to DRC. But before they've spent, again, the tens of thousands of dollars.
Okay, I like that better.
And.
We like that better.
So you said something, I think, also, Jesse, or maybe you said five minutes. I don't think you'll ever get somebody that would do five minutes. But I think a shot clock, and I think, we've talked about this on the DRC side, when we do a concept review, having a shot clock there would be really helpful. Inevitably, it feels like we get into planning their, designing their development. And I hate doing that. I don't want to do that. And I don't want you to do that. And so if they were to come to you, I would want maybe like, here's the specific reasons why. And you've got one or two specific things you're looking at, why this is unique or whatever. Because I don't want you to get into designing their plans.
I agree with that, for sure.
And you're going to, you're going to get bogged down with every.
That's where I'd get a little nervous doing it too much, too, very often before DRC. Because I think some of that's worked out with DRC, right?
You're going to have a much better proposal after DRC than before.
And if it's gone through DRC, we have the ability to at least get in and read the minutes and see what the discussion was.
For sure.
Before it even comes to.
Yeah, maybe sending us the minutes directly in an email. Would that be responsive enough of just to say, hey, can you guys look over this in the next couple of days? And do you have major concerns? If so, let me know. Well, no, tell me why you're saying, oh.
Yeah, just, that's a, that's a public meeting type of format, even though it's an email, as I'm soliciting feedback from you by email. Is that what you were suggesting, to get feedback by email?
Yeah, email, but not with each other involved. Like Dave asked a question, but we just reply back to Dave and say, I don't have a concern about this, but Shane might, you might hear something different from Shane.
Yeah.
You usually do.
You could, you could say, we had this proposal that came up in DRC. Minutes are out there. Could you guys take some time, read the minutes so we can discuss it in our next public meeting?
I'm really comfortable with whatever it is that you guys think makes the most sense for you. I, just to throw out a couple of thoughts, we have a great planning commission. And I don't know why, just by way of a step, we wouldn't say, before something goes to the city council, we're going to schedule some time with the planning commission.
I know that too.
Following kind of the same, you know, I like the idea of you're going to have to be succinct as you describe what you want to do to the planning commission and city council. We're going to keep track of time. Todd Mitchell runs a great meeting, so does the mayor. And, you know, be respectful in that, you know, manner of the time. I think having things go to the planning commission before they go to the city council is a really important part of following a process that is the result of a lot of fine tuning over the years, not just by Spanish Fork, but by communities throughout Utah and elsewhere.
Dave, have you got groups that are saying, hey, I want to show something to the city council before it's even gone through DRC or?
Not necessarily, no, no. I think, I think they're very interested in getting feedback from anybody that is willing to provide it, that's going to, down the road, critique what they submit before. Again, it's about, it's about the time that it takes, I think, for them to get from start to finish and the investment that it takes. And what they put at risk really is a big part of it. Understanding, and I, so this will be part of the speech that people get when they start to talk with us in our office, there's no guarantee. Like, these are conversations where we're trying to help you put your best foot forward to give you the best chance of having a project that gets approved. And of course, some of that boils down to the nature of the proposal. You know, is it something that can be denied because there's like a zone change involved and it's legislative, you know, versus just administrative and that kind of stuff, not to jumble it. But anyway, that's.
One, one thing that might be helpful as well is that we have succinct discussions of what they're trying to get feedback on, right? Not, we don't want Shane going off on road widths when that's not what they're looking for, right? If they're wanting to talk about housing types or whatever that may be.
Never, first of all. But I agree with you 100% that we don't want to plan it up here. And Seth, that's a really good point. We, we can do that. If given the opportunity, we can absolutely give you some critical feedback on road widths or whatever the might be.
Always.
Always. Just ask us. But I do like the process is the DRC, the planning commission. Do you, you've had this feedback now. Do you feel like you need to go for 10 minutes to the city council and talk about this?
Yeah.
I think that of the, over the last year, we had, we've had a couple that, you know what, we were not going to agree on it as a group. The one on the north, south end of town, where there's a racetrack today, right? They, had we short circuited their process, they would not have invested $100,000 or whatever it might be. Because we had some strong opinions about whether or not that should, should or shouldn't be. The one up at the, the one's going to be in front of us in a couple of weeks. I think we could have short circuited that a little bit. So I mean, they're just, I think there's an opportunity for us to weigh in early and prevent a large expenditure on the applicant's part if it's just not going to have a chance. So I think you've put in a process that they can follow and say, hey, okay, here's your chance, but you only get 10 minutes. Come and pitch your case. And we'll give you some feedback. And we need to be disciplined enough to keep it at a high level, for sure.
For sure. I'm thinking, I'm thinking a section in a, in a council meeting and it will be dictated by, no offense to Jordan, but we're not doing it on the night of a budget where we're going to have three people. We're, we're already expended in as far as time when we go through meetings like that. But, but I think where it's appropriate, it may come up with the name of it or something. But hey, there's, maybe there's four slots at the end of a council meeting. And so it's five minutes each. It's 20 minutes is the time that you have. And, and that's what you're going to get to be in front of the council to give your five minutes of.
I like that.
What questions you might have. And as soon as you fill up four spots.
Yeah.
The next one's, the next one's on the next council meeting.
You meet every two weeks, right? Somebody might have to wait a couple of weeks.
Another guideline that might be helpful is if you limit it to legislative actions, since you're a legislative body.
Yep.
You know, development proposals that are going to involve a zone change or general plan change, not something that's administrative that shouldn't become a political issue because it's applying adopted standards and code. it's applying adopted standards and code.
Yeah, good point.
Yeah, totally agree. Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
In direction of, hey, there's, there's four, four slots.
We've got some slots available if you really want to put something in front of the council, then, yeah.
You've earned your keep tonight.
Limited amount of time.
This is a good one.
That's a good one.
You're welcome.
All right. We're in a great meeting.
Must have been that lunch earlier with Mayor Leifson.
Still don't get to sign, be the only signature on letters, but-
Bit of a surprise.
Dave, does that help you to, to be able to tell some, some landowners, developers, and people that are spending money on projects that, hey, here's a spot we might have, but you're only one of four that gets five minutes?
Yeah, on this point, this gets translated and it's probably going to be fairly loose, but like policy language for at least our department. We try to be consistent by way of the messages that we share, and I mean, it almost becomes an invitation, and to be clear by way of, you know, kind of who gets the opportunity or not. I think Vaughn's point is very important, completely agree. Legislative, something that's going to involve your role in that capacity, that's an easy one to use to weed everything else out. But I think I heard that you would at least provide the opportunity for anybody that would be proposing something with a zone change or, you know, similar, to take some airtime with the limits that we've talked about or something akin to that. And still with that, we can, we can even further, you know, maybe encourage, you know, by way of the nature of the project. If this is the last property on the east bench and somebody wants a zone change to R115 on a property that's surrounded by, you know, properties that already is, or excuse me, that are already zoned R115, I'd probably use whatever persuasion that I could to say, just, no, just move on, submit the preliminary plot application, let's go that route, that kind of a thing. This is what we were looking for, but again, you guys are comfortable with us leaving it up to the applicants to decide if they want to go through those steps and-
Yes.
After DRC.
Yeah, DRC.
Yeah.
Planning commission, is that critical for you?
I think that can be very quick, yeah.
Yeah.
Wouldn't they already be coming to us after planning commission anyway, though?
You know, we've, we've kind of used the same approach with the planning commission in getting airtime in this kind of setting, just to vet the project early on.
Sometimes they're only once a month.
The purpose of this, to try and speed things up, and if you're still waiting for planning commission, and it seems to me like if we're going to open up slots at the end of a council meeting to have them initially throw something at us, that we could probably skip some of that.
I think so. Are you at DRC's every week, right?
Well, if they're, if it's going from DRC to planning commission to us to approve, which would be the case if it, then we, this isn't irrelevant, but where we need to speed this up is it goes to DRC, they make comments, planning mission, planning commission makes comments, decides not to ask, or just the circle that's, we need to break that circle somehow and get to us before someone spends a bunch of money. So, I mean, if, that's why I just don't see this happening all that often, because most of those are going to get approved after planning commission, the simple ones. It's only the more difficult ones.
It's really something that maybe there are some more questions or concerns around, and they want to know just, they want to just-
They're going to get a, a bunch of feedback from planning commission, then go, oh, man, I'd like to hear what the city council has to say.
I think you're, yeah, and I think you're shortchanging that a little bit. I, I think if, why wouldn't you take that free look? If, if you could, that's what it's called in the insurance world, a free look, and if I'm going to spend the next, the next big dollar amount on something like this, I'd say, yeah, Dave, put me up for a five-minute spot, because I just want to see if I get that.
But if they got good feedback from the planning commission, why wouldn't they just go to approval from us?
Yeah.
I think you're going to probably most often hear what I probably would term appeal-like. We don't really like what we got out of the staff, or we don't really like what we got out of the planning commission. So they're wanting to double-check with you, are they in tune with you, or do you have a different view? That, it feels to me like that's certainly something. I think there are specific also instances where we would, we might say, we're not sure. We're not sure how to apply this here. Vaughn, is a legislative change in your mind, something that we would potentially want to use for them, obviously a zone change, but some of our zones have latitude, some of our zones have, you know, some range-
Yeah.
-to where they might be this, this number of units in, within that zone versus that. It's still the same zone, but would they be comfortable getting to six units versus eight or 10 versus 12 inside of some of our, our zones that have some spans of, of units per acre? Is that something that you, you would say, yeah, that's something-
If that's still within their legislative discretion to apply, yeah.
Yeah, assuming somebody's going to be coming from an, maybe an RR or some kind of a holding zone to, whether it's an R3, R6, and they're going to have some zone-
Yeah.
-variety there that they can choose from. I, I mean, I think you're thinking of some conversations we have had in our DRC reviews, like, eh, this might be a little too dense, you know, for the area. We haven't really had that, and, and we're acting on our best guess based on, you know, this is, we think that here you're going to have probably, you're better luck getting 10 acres versus 12, or sorry, 10 units per acre versus 12, but we might be splitting hairs, and I think that's one probably where you'd say, you would see them say, I want to go to the council, because if I can get that extra one unit to the acre, that's-
Yeah.
-going to give me 15 more units on my project or something.
And sometimes there's zoning districts allow for a range, too.
That's what, sorry, is that, that's what I'm talking about.
Okay. Yeah, case in point, last week, right, where it's going to not just be what zone works, but are you comfortable with this design that's maybe at the upper end of the, the density range?
One challenge we're having right now is townhomes. I mean, we, we've talked about that, and so I think as we're talking with applicants, we're, we're telling them, ugh, townhomes, probably using that same sound, but then it matters, you know, how you apply it, how you design it, how you lay it out, how you connect it to this or that. I don't think townhomes are all bad at this point, but I think you've had, you have some, we think you have some fatigue based on how we've read feedback from you.
Yeah, and I think, I, I think with us, the, the same kind of policy, we'd want to try to stick to it where it's, it is somebody getting that amount of minutes to, to kind of present, be succinct, and same thing with us. We don't want to, that's not the time we want to legislate the whole thing or redesign the whole thing either.
Yeah.
It just, it's kind of the gut check, Phil, we're going to give you a couple of minutes, maybe of feedback or something, and, and then the public needs to understand, hey, you're going to see some stuff that's, it's not a public hearing, you're not going to be invited up to speak if you're the neighbor that has the concern about that.
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's just a discussion up here, and so I think, I think it's key to lay out what that would be like and what they, what they would expect, could expect before coming.
All extremely helpful. Thank you. You put, find point on maybe the last thing, I kind of hinted at it a second ago. You don't necessarily feel like things need to go development review committee, planning commission, and then council in order for them to get to the council. I've heard that it might just be a matter of timing or something like that.
Yeah, in my opinion, I think they could skip the, the planning commission to, to do it. I wouldn't, it, it seems like if they wait for the one council meeting that's right after our, or one commission meeting that's right after our council meeting, they're going to hit that count, they got to hit that commission meeting next time.
Yeah, hitting that planning, we, DRC meets weekly, planning commission once a month. It, it would make for long meetings, because you'll typically have the business from the planning commission that would come, so you'd have those planning, sorry, those public hearings.
Probably that night, yeah.
And then, so I, I don't know that, it, it may be that this is really only once a month on the first, tonight's council meeting, because this is the, typically the less busy council night. You know, I, obviously we're spitballing here, right? We're brainstorming, but, I mean, I'm assuming if you have a long meeting tomorrow night with the planning commission, that we're expecting a long meeting, the second council meeting in March, right? So, yeah, it may not be, bless you, it may not be that we want to do it the same every meeting, because not every meeting is public hearing set up the same.
Yeah.
Again, thank you. If you don't have anything else, I have what I need for tonight. You will see some correspondence from us either later this week or the first part of next, and that'll just lead to more detailed conversations than we've had about the project and moving forward, so.
Any questions for Dave, general plan?
Thank you, Dave.
Okay, thanks much.
Okay, anything else that needs to come before the council, before adjourning to closed session? If not, entertain a motion.
I move to adjourn to closed session, meeting to discuss purchase exchange release of real property in the Explorer Room.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Carden, seconded by Councilman Euler. Roll call vote here, Councilwoman Beck.
Yes.
Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
Councilman Took.
Yes.
Councilman Carden.
Yes.
And Councilman Euler.
Yes.
We're adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for joining us. Appreciate you being here.